Larry, can you hear me and see my screen okay?
What's that?
Can you hear me okay and see the screen?
Oh yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Larry, Mr. Jacobitz, hello?
Hello.
Seeley, good to see you.
Good to see you. I wonder who else? Do we know who else we're having?
I did. This is John Sherman. I'm here for a zoning exception. I didn't know if, we never heard back whether it was during the ZBA at the beginning or if it was with.
John, you're on the planning commission. So after the ZBA meeting, which not only is a half an hour, but it may run a little longer tonight.
So you think I should just come back on a little bit after seven or so?
Yeah, you come back on a little after seven, you know, be safe at seven, but it'll probably be a little.
Alright, sounds good. We'll see you then.
Hey John, John, how you doing on your building on Mommy Street?
Uh, well, that's what we're here to discuss. I'm trying to get approval so I can move forward.
Okay.
So, yeah, we've kind of been just kind of.
A little question.
We've been in limbo for a while now.
Well, I remember you came before this board months ago and I thought everything was resolved. Is this something different?
Nope, it's just that was for, that was for the zoning variance.
They also need a zoning exception permit from the planning commission, Larry, in a site plan review.
Yep. It was, there was a lot of back and forth with, with the architect and, and the city and, and we were just getting stuff done that they wanted to see on there and, and the list seemed like it grew a little bit. So we had to keep, keep doing what they asked and we finally got everything worked out. So we're happy, we're happy we're here today.
Okay, so COVID slowed you down a bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So alright, we'll see you guys around seven. I'm not sure. I don't know how to sign off this, but I will see you then.
Yeah, you just click the link again when, when you come back, it'll work the same.
If you click on leave and then just come in again.
Yeah, I see it up there now. Alright, we'll see you guys.
Jeremy, do you know who we are expecting for ZBA because I'm looking at three of us here.
Um, Koleski will not.
Bird told will not.
And bird will.
Okay.
We're just waiting on, on bird.
Jerry here.
Who is bird?
Bird, bird, Jerry.
Oh Jerry. Oh, okay.
Jerry, you there?
Okay, so COVID slowed you down a bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So alright, we'll see you guys around seven. I'm not sure. I don't know how to sign off this, but I will see you then.
Yeah, you just click the link again when, when you come back, it'll work the same.
If you click on leave and then just come in again.
Yeah, I see it up there now. Alright, we'll see you guys.
Jeremy, do you know who we are expecting for ZBA because I'm looking at three of us here.
Um, Koleski will not.
Bird told will not.
And bird will.
Okay.
We're just waiting on, on bird.
Jerry here.
Who is bird?
Bird, bird, Jerry.
Oh Jerry. Oh, okay.
Jerry, you there?
If there's anybody here that's waiting for planning commission, they'll start no sooner than seven. So you might want to just go get a beverage.
And more likely seven fifteen.
Yeah.
I joined, I joined a second ago. I, I have myself on muted. My name's Aaron. I got sent the link to get in here to try to get some stuff approved.
Aaron, you are number four on our agenda. So if you're driving your car, oh Lord, you've probably, you've got at least fifteen or twenty minutes before we need you.
Awesome.
You can find a place to pull over.
Awesome. Alright, I'll, I'll see you guys in fifteen twenty.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Oh dear. I noticed that when I was trying to zoom from my phone yesterday, it had a safe driving mode. I thought, you're kidding me. It just does not sound like a good idea.
Jeremy, what's our quorum for CBA?
We, we could, we can, we can go with, well, I mean, a full complement is five, so we can go with three.
You can go with three, but you'd need unanimous.
We need, you know, have to be unanimous action, so.
I just checked Gary, Jerry said he'd be here. I double-checked my email, so.
Okay, let's give him two minutes and then start without him because we don't want to keep these people waiting. I have six thirty-five. Is there anyone opposed to getting started?
Let's go for it.
Alright, let us call to order this meeting of the Adrian City Zoning Board of Appeals. It is July seventh, twenty twenty. This is our regular meeting. Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes. It's been a while since we met. Commissioners, you should have a copy of the April seventh minutes somewhere in your electronic file. And I assume you've had a chance to review them. Any discussion on the minutes?
I would move to approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
It's important.
We'll do a voice vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. The minutes are approved.
Ah, and there's, and there is Mr. Berg.
Oh, good.
Hey Jerry.
Hi guys.
Hi Jerry, all you've missed is the approval of the minutes.
I got in on the vote.
Okay, awesome. Our next order is a, let me get, ah, I really, if we could have a print copy when we're meeting by Zoom for us old folks, that would be super. Looking for permission for a storage shed over one hundred square feet at the address two thirty-two Melrose Avenue. Is there anyone here that wants to speak to this? Mr. Love, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Would you just state your name, please, for the record and tell us briefly what's going on and what we can do for you?
My name is Robert Love. I live at two thirty-two Melrose Avenue. I would like to, instead of putting a ten by ten shed in, I would like to put a twelve by twenty shed on my property.
Say a few words about why ten by ten isn't enough.
It's not big enough to hold my snow blower, my grandchildren's four by four, because I'm storing some things for them, and my lawnmowers.
Okay.
Perhaps we should, we should consider that, that unlike many of the items that come before the ZBA, this is not so much a dimensional variance. And staff could weigh in on this if I'm misstating this, but this is a requirement for the ZBA to review any accessory building larger than ten by ten. And is mostly just kind of a, a check on there being except, except for large accessory buildings in, in any area, but particularly residential areas.
Yeah, that's correct. As member Jacobitz stated, this is, this is not a dimensional variance. And so you don't have to hold the applicant to those standards. It's an opportunity for neighbor comment, if there are any, and to review its appropriateness in the, in the particular location, but it's not held to the variance standard, nature of an administrative.
Mr. Love, where would this be located on your property?
Thank you.
It would be located on the northeast side.
Okay, so towards, towards the rear of the property?
Yes.
Okay.
How close to the neighbor?
Five feet away from the property line and five feet from the county property.
So five foot setback on both sides?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have any other, I, I drove by and I didn't see any, but you, you don't have any other accessory buildings on your property?
No, sir.
Okay.
This is, this is going to be a prefab type of shed?
Yes, sir.
There was a, there was a photograph of it in the past, I believe.
There it is.
Oh, thank you, Michelle. Now, sure, first of all, nice chair. I see that we had one written comment or email comment that Jeremy had provided in the packet from.
Yes, I, I saw that too. While we're getting that on the screen, is there anyone else in this Zoom meeting that would like to weigh in on the appropriateness of this shed? Okay, so we have one neighbor.
We had, I had some discussions with her. Her concern was, you hear me okay?
Sure, thanks.
Um, her concern was just it becoming a slippery slope. And I tried to explain to her that there's a kind of a checks and balance system with this. That's the reason they're coming to you, kind of, Mr. Jacobitz said. So this was just, I'm including it because there was some conversation that was had.
Okay.
Oh, I see Mr. Bird told this year too now as well.
Is he? Mr. Bird told, would you like to take over?
You're, you're muted, Mike. Maybe he's even on the phone. It looks like. I'm not sure.
Well, we'll leave him alone for now. If he wants to jump in on the next one, we'll let him. Um.
Still at the hospital waiting to get out of here, so.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to pop in and see what was going on.
There is no day longer than the day when they say it'll probably be today. And then they do the paperwork.
Alright, so go ahead. I'm just watching.
Alright, thanks, Mike.
If, if there's no further discussion, I would move for approval of the proposed, for, for adoption of the resolution. Or approval of the shed at two thirty-two Melrose Avenue.
Is there a second to that motion?
I, I second.
Alright, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Oh, it's?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Fair?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
I was passing namelessly.
Alright, thank you. Have fun with your shed.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
The next order of business is another shed, this one at one twenty-six East Albert Street. Is there someone here that would like to talk about this one?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Ms. Belcher, would you give your name, please, and tell us what it is you want to do?
Uh, my name is Cherry Belcher and I live at one twenty-six East Albert. And I want to put a twelve by twenty-four shed up.
Alright, and, let's see, I'm looking through the papers. I see a picture of your shed. From Total Shed Solutions. I'm just gonna look you up on Google Map while you tell me where it's going to go on your property, please.
Uh, it's going to be next to my driveway towards the back. I wanted it to run the back of my house up to the front. So it's going to be right beside my house. I sent pictures.
I see the picture of the shed and I have the, the diagram you provided. I'm not sure from the diagram how this sits on the property or how far it is away from the property lines.
Uh, well, it'll be, well, actually from the back of the, my back neighbor, it'll probably be about twenty-five, thirty feet away. And then I don't have no neighbors on either side of me. It's their backyard. And it won't be close to their property line. It'll probably be about twenty feet away from their property.
Is it between your house and Albert Street or?
Uh, it would be right next to, well, if you were facing my house, it would be on the left side, left side of my driveway.
Where those trees, where these big trees?
Uh, no, there used to be a big tree right there and I had it cut down. So it actually right where that big tree used to be, that's where it'd be going.
So it'll be fairly near to Albert Street?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Is this the section of Albert Street that is between Broad and Main or the section that is between Main and a dead end?
Between Broad and Main. In fact, her house is immediately behind that new green coffee house that has yet to open.
Oh, okay. Alright, I got it.
Well, yeah, I'm right across the street from the skate park.
Okay.
Jeremy, have you, have you reviewed this for a specific location on the site and, and where it can be assured that the setbacks are met?
Uh, well, that's one part of the condition. I wanted it to, for her to provide dimensions prior to placing it, as long as you guys are okay with the size, so I can be sure. This was during the whole COVID thing, so some things, some of these guys haven't gotten to me. And I don't want to hold them up if you guys are okay with it. So they, she can provide me where it's going to go. And as long as it'll meet the requirements, then.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Any written phone comments on this from the neighbors, or?
No.
Or is, is there anyone on this Zoom call who would like to express an opinion about this shed? This is a public meeting. Okay. Um, hearing none. Shall we look at the motion, at the resolution, and could I hear a motion on the resolution? Yes, we get it.
As, as it's scrolling up here.
Yeah, here, I think we have it now.
Yeah, Michelle, can you scroll to the bottom? I was looking for if there was a uh, with the conditions of the height of the accessory building, that material, lot dimensions.
Lot dimensions.
Okay, I would move for approval of this request with, uh, for adoption of the resolution as provided, with the conditions that the height of the accessory building, the type of material, the lot dimensions, and the specific location on the lot be submitted to the Community Development Department prior to construction.
And approved by them.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, do I have support for the motion?
Port.
All right, uh, is there any discussion of the motion? Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Uh, Strayer?
Yes.
Obits?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
You have your shed, you'll need to have a conversation, but you're all set to go.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is a third shed, this one at 335 Moeller Street. Is there someone here who can talk about this one? I do not see Mr. Quayar.
He, I know, was gonna have a call in, so he may have issues. Um, he did provide me with a drawing, I tried to reach out to everyone that didn't have one. Um, there should be a drawing on the next one, so.
Oh, okay. So get to him. So he's is that Beecher at the top of the drawing?
Uh.
Oh, it's an alley behind there.
It's his back alley at the top of the drawing.
Okay.
And, um, because there's a whole other block or half a block of lot there between his property and Beecher.
Oh, he's behind 711, that's right.
Yeah, yes, well, 711 into the east, behind 711, east about five houses.
Yep, I remember now. And Jeremy, have you had a conversation with him about size and setback and?
Yep, um, he came in, I saw him, um, I wanna say actually yesterday, or not yesterday, uh, last week, Friday, um, he gave me this drawing, so he understands where he needs to be.
Okay.
And based on the drawing, it looks like it's, oops, sorry, it went away.
There we go, okay.
Based on the drawing, it's a four foot setback, well, more than that with the driveway there, and 17 on the other side, and more than 30 feet in the back, so has met all the setbacks for sure. And could we go back to the, um, to the Google Maps? Thank you, Michelle. And I'm trying to discern if there's already other accessory buildings on the property, but it doesn't look like it does.
Not on his, I don't believe. I had asked him about that. Um, I think that may have been, I don't remember his exact words, but that may have been a shed that he's replacing.
Oh, yes, right, he's the one that had an eight by eight, and he's replacing it with a 12 by 12.
Oh, okay.
That's right, I remember now.
Very well.
This is a public meeting, is there anyone on this Zoom call who would like to comment on Mr. Quayar's shed? All right, could we have the resolution in front of us, please, and could I hear a motion?
Hi, I'm, I'm back in here, this is Aaron.
Uh, we're, we're almost ready for you, hang on two minutes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, I would move the adoption of the resolution, um. I think that Jeremy, have you already had all the information in terms of height and materials and dimensions that you need, or do we need more information?
Hmm, I believe I have from him. Um, I'd still like them to define the height.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe I put that in the, uh.
You did, okay. I would, I would move adoption of the resolution as it's written with the conditions of the height and type of materials and lot dimensions be submitted, uh, prior to construction.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Berg?
Yes.
Obits?
Yes.
Lee?
Support.
Strayer?
Yes.
All right, let's, let's let the gentleman know that his shed has been approved. Mike, I don't know if this is planning commission or, or, or whom, but, you know, I drove by Lowe's and I looked at 10 by 10 sheds. Nobody's gonna build a 10 by 10 anymore. Should we change this dimension so that people don't have to do this?
Probably, we should certainly consider that. On the other hand, and I'm not, maybe, maybe we need to have a discussion with staff, because we've gone years without having one of these be, before the ZBA.
Right.
You wonder if maybe they have just gone without any notice or approval, and people just put them up.
Maybe, I don't remember.
Well, I think, I think prior, uh, staff persons may have ignored this part of the ordinance was the problem, which I guess is also a problem with the ordinance. Anytime you have a lot of variance requests on the same issue, or requests of, you know, again, this is not truly a variance request, as, as Jeremy said, it's sort of a check on, on the size of the shed, but, but whenever there's a whole proliferation of things like that, um, it usually means you should adjust the ordinance.
Any commission will take it under advisement.
Thank you.
We have two more coming next month as well.
Oh, really? And obviously, we need, we still want some, we need to balance, we don't want them to be beyond a certain size, but, but I suggest the 10 by 10 is too small for the 21st century, or might be. I'd appreciate you considering it.
Will do.
Thank you. All right, our fourth item tonight is a dimensional variance at 13, 1372 South Main. I believe Mr. Hips is back with us. Uh, Mr. Hips, would you identify yourself, please, and tell us what you're after? Oh, and unmute yourself, you are on mute.
Sorry about that.
That's all right, start again.
Hi, my name is Aaron Hips. Uh, we are looking to, I don't have the exact address on hand right now, but the, um, Big Lots Building next to Planet Fitness and Asian Buffet. And we're just looking to get the variance for 100 feet. Um, I guess it's a sound range. Um, we just need to get approval that the building's within 100 feet of every, any, uh, living.
Um, can you say more? What, what's the noise gonna be? What's gonna go on in this building?
Um, so it's going to be a arcade slash, uh, bar, or not even bar, more of just food. Um, and so it's, we're gonna have 60, what, there's 60 something games going in, and then I'm going in with a silent partner, and they're just gonna be doing food and beer and other stuff. We're, we're currently still working out more of the stuff, but we're just trying to get the basic stuff approved before we throw all of our, uh, cards in.
So this is a, uh, what's it in Buster kind of thing?
Yes, it's a Dave and Buster's, yep, basically.
Okay, but, but without a liquor license?
Um, no, there's not gonna be, yep, no liquor license, nope.
So why are people gonna go there?
Uh, so it's going to be, so basically, right now, um, I run smaller versions of this arcade, um, that we're working all over Michigan. Um, I have a, one that was in the Adrian Mall before it got condemned, um, and then we have one out in Monroe, and then we also have one out in Detroit. Um, and they're smaller versions of what we're doing now, they're just like unmanned stores, um, and they've been doing well for us for the past five years, and we have 2 million people on a YouTube channel that's about all these arcades, and, um, that's how we promote these stores, and, um, we've done polls and research and just a bunch of other stuff to go behind it, to back it up, um, and we're just trying to kind of take the business up to the next step, if that makes any sense.
Jeremy, can you explain? I'm finding the paperwork a little confusing for this one, can you explain what the variance is?
Um, yeah, so part of the, um, I think I used the citation of it, maybe not. Um, part of the use for that is being 100 feet from any residential, um, and the way our ordinance reads is residential parcel, so instead of it being the building to building, it's you know, parcel to parcel, and they're butting up against, um, the apartments that are behind there, I think I gave a um, Michelle, if you wanna scroll up, um, I think you can kind of see how far away they are. And although the parcels are near each other, they're far enough apart that the 100 foot buffer wouldn't be an issue for sound, um, if you see fit.
Technically, this would be a 100 foot variance.
Yeah.
And 1372 is that whole building? I, where's 1372 on this map?
So it's gonna be where the old Big Lots is, so it is going to be right above where it says 1370.
Right above?
Yeah. Um, so they'll be uh, they'll be to the east side of this, uh, cluster of apartments there at the top.
In, in way of just general discussion, uh, the ordinance that doesn't specifically cover arcades like this, and it refers to, uh, bowling alleys and archery, uh, facilities and a variety of other things. Uh, and I certainly understand why, you know, in terms of traffic and, and possibly exterior noise, we wouldn't want them by residential properties. On the other hand, uh, this is entirely, the proposed use is entirely self-contained. Uh, Aaron can, Mr. Hips can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong here, but there won't be any outside activity other than, other than people coming in the front door.
Um, al- also, in the, in the building, there's going to be an additional, like, so when you walk into the back room, there's an additional like 70 feet from, when you walk into the back door that's butted up to the apartments, there's 70 feet from the back door to where the actual arcade starts, and there's a full wall right there, because there's gonna be a there's just gonna be like a kitchen and storage area back there, so add it on to the space from where the back door is to the closest apartment, there's an additional like 70 feet, you know, from where the actual uh, the sound is gonna be coming from, if that makes any sense.
I, I would suggest that if we wanted to grant this variance, and we need to, I realize we still need to do a finding of fact on it, but that, that this use would certainly meet the, the spirit of the ordinance, if not the exact letter.
Sure.
Is, is there mini storage in this project at all?
No, 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 it's just, it's just gonna be just.
I'm looking on page 33, and it's all about mini storage?
Oh, you're talking about in the back room, okay, yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
I, I don't know what I'm talking about, I just know that everything on page 33 is about mini storage, and I wasn't sure how that fit into the project.
What, so in the back, it's, it's, it's just storage for just our just equipment technicians to work on stuff that's broken and stuff like that, and that's all in the back, and that's what I was talking about.
Stop right there, go, 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 go down.
I'm, I'm, I'm missing what you're talking about, I'm sorry.
Go down, could I see number one on this page, please?
Number one, what's number one?
This is the standards, read the stuff in italics.
Okay, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's carryover from John Sherman's building.
Okay.
Oh, God, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I was gonna say, there's, there's storage in the back.
Any storage.
All right, okay.
That's that whole first sentence in that.
Well, that whole page is about mini storage.
Oh, scratch it all.
Okay, thank you, I, all right, I feel better now.
Do the, do the, I mean, after, after we finish the public hearing, do the review of the standards, but ignore.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is there, uh, I don't, we don't seem to have had any written comments, is there anyone on this Zoom call who wishes to express a comment about this proposal?
I'm, uh, Mike Nicklewitz, even though it says Gail Nicklewitz, I'm using my wife's laptop. Uh, I'm working with Aaron, I'm his architect, and, um, I think to clarify, what he was, what we were talking about, the back, the existing back storage area of Big Lots is gonna remain a back room, and so that's gonna create kind of a buffer between the noise, the law, I wouldn't say noise, but the arcade area and alleyway outside.
Mike, you know, you, you know you can change your name on Zoom.
I know, I just be lazy.
Okay.
Are there any other comments or questions about this proposal?
I, I just have one question, and that is, who is the clientele here? What, what age group and?
Um, so the age gr, I mean, we're looking anywhere from probably kids all the way up to 30-ish, 40, probably. I mean, there's a really wide range of people, because I mean, you're gonna have, there'll be food, obviously, so there'll be like a bar area and stuff like that. Uh, we won't have a liquor license, but we're looking into just doing just beer, um, so we're looking into getting a, a beer license. Um, but just your basic, just down-to-earth food, and then we're looking just to do, obviously, arcade games, and then the machines, obviously. If you guys have been to Dave and Buster's or anything like that, the machines will spit out, um, tickets, or, um, the, the tickets from machines will actually go into a card. Um, and then you just take the card and it's just like, you redeem it for prizes, stuffed animals, candy, whatever, AirPods, uh, iPads, just whatever, how many tickets you win. And so, yeah, so we're looking anywhere from, I mean, probably six, seven to 40, because that's just kind of where I take the, um, that's the age range of what I have on the current business with my little arcades that I have through my other LLC. Um, that's kind of the same range, so I'm assuming the same thing.
So it sounds like a family-friendly place.
Of course, yes, sir.
This, this does not have the stigma of the old pinball parlor, parlors that, you know, had six teenagers hanging out in front.
Yeah, right, no, I, right, um, no, it's, it's, I, 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 you know, it's, it's something I think that, that, that I'm looking forward to doing, because, uh, God willingly, you know? Um, just because every time I talk to someone in Adrian, there's like, there's nothing really to, you know, there's, we got a movie theater, a bowling alley, and that skating rink, you know, by MJR, and that's pretty much it, and so I'm, you know, I think it would definitely be a hit, you know? Um, and we got a lot of people to back up the project, just from, I got 2 million people behind me, and that's how I've planted all these other little arcades around Michigan. Um, and, and it's been shown that it's been working for at least five, oh, just about five years now, um, so I'm excited, you know?
Sounds real good.
Good deal, thank you, thank you.
Hearing no further discussion. Can I have a motion on the resolution? Is that next to, yes, and then the findings of fact?
Okay, I would, I would move that, uh, depending upon the act, action, uh, results of the finding of fact, that we at least consider approving this request for 100 foot variance, uh, variance from the adjoining property.
You're right, we are backwards. Michelle, could I have the, uh, standards, please?
I looked over it again, it's one and four that are, uh, the two that carried over by accident.
Okay. That's all right, I'll find it online. Uh, in order to grant you a variance, we have to find yes on seven uh, standards that are laid out for us, uh, so we're gonna go through those and talk them over. So number one, that there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships that prevent carrying out the strict letter of this ordinance. These hardships or difficulties shall not be deemed economic, but shall be evaluated in terms of the use of a particular parcel of land. These hardships or difficulties shall not be deemed economic, but shall be evaluated in terms of the use of a particular parcel of land. The building's already there.
Yep.
And, and I'm not sure the ordinance was capable of fully anticipating every possible use for a building in this district.
Right. Right. You know what, Aaron? You don't have to respond for a little bit. We're just going to talk among ourselves.
For sure. Just put me on mute so any background noise doesn't disrupt. I'll stay here though.
All right. Thanks. Uh, so are we staying in the affirmative on number one?
I would.
All right. Let's move on to number two. That a genuine hardship exists because of unique circumstances or physical conditions such as narrowness, shallowness, shape or topography of the property involved, or to the intended use of the property that do not generally apply to other property uses in the same zoning district and shall not be recurrent in nature.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that really applies here.
Now, if Mel were here, he would be telling us, there's a building there. It's ready for use and someone wants to use it. But bless his heart, if Mel were here, um, yeah, he's not, he's taking over an existing property and that feels really different to me. Than this. Can we agree that that's an affirmative? Anyone object? All right. Number three, that the hardship or special conditions or circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, as we said, other than choosing this empty building to take over. No, he did not construct the building. Uh, number four, that the variance will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this ordinance and will not cause a substantial adverse effect upon surrounding property, property values and the use and enjoyment of property in the neighborhood or district. Seems to me they've taken some steps and thought about storage in the back to buffer the sound a little bit. Locating not in a particularly quiet spot. Uh, unless I'm missing something, I'm going to find in the affirmative there. Okay. Number five, the granting, the variance will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by this ordinance to the land structures or buildings in the same district. Someone else wants to put up an arcade, they can come around to. Mike, does our ordinance, it does not specify arcade anywhere?
Not that I'm aware of.
Correct. Okay. Uh, number six, that the variance requested is the minimum amount necessary to overcome the inequality inherent in particular property or to mitigate the hardship. Again, the building is there. So he's asking for the minimum unless he's going to move the building. So let's find in the affirmative there. Number seven, that the variance shall not permit the establishment within a district of any use which is not permitted by right within the zoning district or any use for which a special use permit of it or a temporary use permit is required. I will rely on you all to interpret that one for me when the ordinance doesn't specify arcades.
The, um,
So if I may, I just checked. It does specify arcades in there.
Oh, does it?
Yeah. It's under the 14.3.
Okay. Um, I would note that this, this will require, the use, the use will require a, um, zoning exception permit, but, but before they will even, before the planning commission will even consider that, the variance would need to be approved. So.
Okay. So we'll find in the affirmative for all seven. And now we're ready for a motion. Sorry about that. Mike, would you restate your motion?
Okay, I would.
Now that we have found in the affirmative for our seven findings of fact.
Uh, I would move adoption of the resident, having found affirmatively in the findings of fact for all the considerations for granting a variance, uh, I would move for adoption of the resolution as presented.
Second.
Second.
All right. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Opitz?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Grayer?
Lad?
Muted lad.
Oh, sorry about that.
Lad, put a thumbs up or something. We can't hear you.
Oh.
Thank you. Let the record show that Lad's thumb went up.
Okay. Can you hear me?
We don't need to, but thank you. We can't.
Okay. All right. Cool. All right.
Mr. Berg?
Yes. Affirmative.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right. Mr. Hips, uh, stay in touch with the city and find out what your next steps are. But you have cleared this hurdle. Your dimensional variance is granted.
Let's go. Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is there any other business before this EBA tonight?
I just wondered, uh, Jeremiah, this is really for you. I'm amazed at how many fireworks stands were popping up all over. We used to have to okay those. None of those came before, uh, the, uh, ZBA.
Greg, Greg, remember, Jerry, Jerry, remember that once, once they have been there once and the city views them to have been in compliance, that they, they get a five-year, I think it's five-year approval. So they don't have to report us every year.
We never approved the one in the, well, there were ones that were keep up that never got approved.
Ah, okay.
And what was that was?
Well, I don't think the, the one on Wamie Street that is at the, uh,
At County Market?
Store, that one was approved.
But the one at County Market, I don't think was.
No, that's one at County Market was never approved. And I'd be concerned about one at County Market and, and its impact on parking uh, with the whole pandemic that's going on. I just wondered what happened.
It'd be one that we didn't catch, um, during any rounds, um, trying to find them. We rely on people telling us when they find those. Um, I know I brought two of them before you guys last time and there was one or two that are up this year. So you'll have four next year coming in front of you for sure. Um, the County Market one, I'll look at, see who it is and then we'll snag them next time.
Right.
Is there a limit to how many we can have?
Well, not per the ordinance. There's just, they need to come in front of you and meet criteria. There may be for the fire department potentially. Um.
Definitely.
And there's not a specific number limit, um, Jerry, but I, I would presume that, like, I think the ones we're referring to on West Wamie Street, we've got two within, you know, within what, 200 feet of another, one another.
Exactly. I just wondered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a couple on 223, but they're in Madison Township, so we don't have control over that. But the, the one on the south side of 223, probably we voted on two years ago, maybe three?
Yes.
And they have up to five years. The ones that I brought before you, um, a couple of months ago, we only gave them a year. So they'll be back again next year. Um, you know, it's, I wasn't comfortable with them redoing that position again and again each year because it's kind of a weird spot. Um, and we're developing around those areas. So it's by Hobby Lobby and all that kind of stuff. One of them was. Um, so I wanted them to do one year.
Okay.
And, and we're, we're allowing these large containers to be part of that. One on County Market again has a large container. I, I, I'm concerned about safety around this whole thing. That's my concern, not that we're selling fireworks. It's just, that one just seems inappropriate where it is.
I know last year, the police chief, um, the fire chief and I had discussions on trying to crack down on these that weren't licensed or not. So Rob and the clerk's been in on this too. So we've been trying to re- rely on each other to find them and then, you know, check and see. So this must've been when we missed.
I'd, I'd like to tag on what Jerry said. I was at Ace Hardware today, which is right next to County Market. And what they had set up was definitely an issue as far as navigating the parking lot itself. Um, it was difficult to see and it was really kind of in, just in the wrong place to try to exit and enter that parking lot, which isn't a, isn't really a very big parking lot.
And it's an awkward, it's an awkward entrance and exit out of that parking lot anyway. Without the fireworks stand. But, uh, that was my concern.
If in fact that one is not licensed, they're still there. We may want to give them notice now so they don't just pop up next year.
Yeah, I'm going to go there first thing in the morning and see if I can figure out at least the name of the company so we know.
Excellent. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Anything else for the ZBA? All right then, we will close this meeting. Planning Commission will start in, how long, Mike?
Uh, why don't we take like a two-minute break?
All right.
And we will start the planning commission in about two minutes.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Hope your wife is okay.
Do you mean Mike's?
Mike Bertold.
Well, okay.
Everybody's spouse should be better.
Yeah.
Thank you. There we go. All right.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Oh, Michelle. Michelle, are you still there?
Yes.
Would it, I, I'll, I'll talk to you before the next meeting. I see that I can chat only with you or with the whole group. Would it be possible to set it up so that I could chat privately with, or is that a violation of the open meeting sec?
No, it's not a violation. Um, I have it set up so that you can only chat with me due to Zoom bombing issues.
Okay. All right. I, I was going to ask Mike a question about what I was supposed to do next without.
We, I can open it up though. We haven't had any issues, so.
Maybe because we're a small enough group, it would work, but it's not a big deal. We got through it. And Mike, Mike Bertold will be back next time, so. Never mind. Thank you.
And if you ever need to, you can always send me a message and I can send it to them.
Oh, okay.
Question to. That's what we do during the.
And then he would have to go through you to get back to me too.
Right. It's a little bit of a pain, but we're just trying to keep a handle on.
Yeah.
Any issues.
I chair a meeting about once every two years and I just never remember what order. We need Mike back. Mike, if you're still there, come back. All right. Good night, everybody.
Night.
Jeremy?
Yes, ma'am.
You or Mike or Greg will probably have to walk me through all these documents since there's quite a few.
Yep.
I'll tell you what.
Let me know.
Um, the first one should have 310320 in the name.
Is it in the packet or is it one of the separate ones?
Uh, separate ones. That's consumers, their last. So if you want to drag them to the end.
Yeah, that's, that's the first, oh, yeah, there you go. That's the first one.
And then, uh, yep. So you have them in the right order for when we.
Okay. We've got Gordon and myself and Dr. Love and Nancy Weatherby, Chad Johnson, Brian Watson, Krista Patton. Okay. I think that's probably everybody. So folks, if we're ready to go, Jeremy, Michelle, Greg, we're ready to start. We will call to order the July 7th regular meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. I mentioned in my email, planning commissioners, that, uh, Carol Leonard has submitted a letter of resignation to the planning commission. She has taken another position that will eventually take her out of state. And I just wanted to let you know that. First item on our agenda is consideration of our June minutes. Commissioners, you have a copy of those minutes. I presume you've had an opportunity to review them. Are there any additions or corrections in the June minutes? If there are none, we entertain a motion for approval of those minutes.
Actually, I did notice at the very end of last time's minutes, um, when you guys put the consumers' energy item on the agenda, I don't think it was updated from the previous meeting because it says you set it for the June meeting and that, uh, Bob Love uh, made the motion and I had seconded it, but obviously I wasn't there for the June meeting and that was for the July meeting. So that doesn't look to be, uh, updated.
Okay. That's under authority to set public hearings. So.
Yes.
So noted, Krista. Thank you. Any other corrections or additions to the, uh, June minutes? Hearing none, we entertain a motion for approval of those minutes as corrected then.
Motion to approve.
Krista? And from Bob, was that you?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Amplified.
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is case number 20018, which is a request for a zoning exception permit and also our site plan review for indoor mini storage facility at 1310 1320 West Wamie Street. Um, this, as I recall, was tabled at our May meeting. So in order to be completely proper here, we would need, require a motion to take this off from the table. And if someone's going to make that motion, unmute yourself and please do so.
Move.
Don't move.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Love with a second by Commissioner Weatherby. All those in favor of on-tableing this, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Okay. Then we'll take this into consideration. Is there someone, uh, in the meeting to speak to this? Either Mr. Sherman or Brenda, is it going to be you?
Um, start with John.
Okay. Uh, John, if you'd unmute yourself and very briefly tell it, tell us what it is you propose, you're proposing to do here.
Uh, yeah, we're just, we're looking at putting a climate-controlled mini storage in the building. Um, it's going to occupy both the Ramus Building and the, the Fish Doctor Building. The, the two buildings are joined. There are multiple entrances as we, we've spoken on and are in the drawings. But, but basically, yep, that's still the same plan. I guess I'm not, I'm, I don't know what to speak on it about. But yeah, we're going to, we're going to be doing storage units, um, on all three levels in the lo- the larger, the Ramus Building, the 320 West Wamie. Um, there are going to be smaller units coming in the Fish Doctor. Um, and we'll be adding on the east side of that building, a new garage entrance. Um, that will accommodate the whole first floor. There's also a, a truck docking bay on the west side of the Ramus Building. Um, so, so, uh, semis and any, any larger trucks can back up and load and unload there. And on the, and on the basement, there's, uh, there's actually four garage doors on the basement level, two on the Fish Doctor and two on the Ramus Building. And then, um, there are stairs to access the, 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 the top story of the Ramus Building. But there's als- there's als- also a freight elevator. It's a non-passenger freight elevator. And that, that would be the last portion of the building that we would, we had built out. Um, and we still haven't done any investigation on the elevator, but.
And, and I just want to add too, as we established at the last meeting, this will not have any exterior storage at all. So all be contained within the building itself.
Probably I should mention that this came before the ZBA, uh, a couple of months ago because the, technically a storage facility like this in the district that it's located in, uh, requires, uh, Jerry, was it 50-foot setback?
Yep.
From the front lot line. And obviously, uh, given this building, uh, that's not a practical, uh, thing to do. The, the zoning board granted, granted that requested variance. And so, which is why it's before us now, um, with the, uh, uh, as a request for the zoning exception permit. Brenda, was there anything you wanted to add to what John already, already said?
Um, no, I think those were the major points. Um, no, I think those are the major points. Other than that, it was built in the 1920s as a warehouse. It's been in operation as a warehouse ever since. And all of the new storage lockers in there will be removable. Um, and also, John, I think it's gone to extraordinary lengths to, uh, with the work that he's trying to do to preserve and restore um, the steel sash windows. We've, uh, the drawings have indicated, you know, it's kind of gonna be phased depending on how things go, but there's initial package where we'll be restoring the steel sash windows, which I think would be fantastic. The ones we can't restore right now, we're putting some sort of protective covering on that, so you won't be looking at the sash and the CMU and all this sort of junky stuff that's in the windows now. It's gonna clean up the facade a lot. And obviously, it's gonna clean up the parking lot and the Fish Doctor Building, uh, I think it's gonna look, uh, much better. We're putting some, you know, nice siding and some, um, culture stone veneer on the base, and I, I think it's gonna be a vast improvement over what you see today.
Yeah, I, I had a meeting with, uh, Jeremy, Jeremiah and Greg Elliott about two, two and a half weeks ago. And we, we went over a window plan and we, we came to an agreement and I actu- and I, I added that I'm gonna restore, um, there are six additional windows that aren't locked in already that are on the second level of the Ramus Building um, that are facing east. Um, we, I always intended in, uh, encapsulating those windows, but the more I talked to them, they, they said that, you know, a lot of this was due putting through was because you guys wanted to see a lot of this restored, so. I went ahead, we changed that on the plan, so now I'm, um, we're gonna be renovating those. We started renovating last week. Uh, we pulled the first window, actually in that back corner on the second floor. Um, there're gonna be a lot of work and it's gonna be a phased, phased rebuild of these things. Um, but they're gonna turn out really nice. Um, right now, we're getting them ready for paint. We're grinding them down. We're cleaning them down 100% with different grinders. We've had to add some metal and, and then we're re-glazing them, um. And then we're gonna, I've been working with, uh, painter supply in town and we're going with, it's gonna be, uh, it's a serious product. We're gonna be putting on these two coats. And then we gotta put a UV protective gloss on them. They're gonna be jet gloss black and they're gonna really look sharp and we're, as we do, and we're gonna redo the concrete if needed on the cells. And then on the, just to speak on the windows, and then on the facing east, um, those, all those upper windows which are already blocked in, you can't really tell on the plans what they are all blocked in up there. Um, we're gonna be encapsulating those and then, um, we're gonna be doing, um, some special shutters with log, with some logos and design cut out of them and possibly even some lighting to really accent, to accent those.
John, excuse me, the drawings showed awnings over the, over those windows. Is that correct?
The west, yeah.
Oh, on the west.
That'll, that, and that'll only be on the, on the, the upper windows facing west.
Okay.
That, that detail, sorry, that detail is on the G001 sheet. If you want to go back to it, it's on the bottom of that. Yeah, I think it's the second sheet, yeah.
Yeah, I kinda like that. Commissioners, any questions for, for either the architect or, or for the petitioner here? Jeremy, did we receive any written or phone calls on this particular proposal?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this project? Hearing none, uh, we would close the public hearing portion of this particular item and go to commissioner discussion. In order to grant a zoning exception permit, we need to determine that the proposed use meets all the specific requirements set forth for each use specified as being subject to a zoning exception permit. And this one does, with the exception that it doesn't need the setback, but a variance has already been granted for that. That granting the permit will not adversely affect environmental conditions or the value of surrounding properties. I would judge that rehabilitating this building and putting it back into, into use plus to surrounding properties. I mean, that the proposed use is compatible with the adjacent and surrounding properties. As long as the exterior design for renovations respects the building's historic character, I think the standard can be met. The proposed use is consistent with the city's future land use plan, and this is a allowable use in the B2 district, which resides. I think that if we chose to approve this zoning exception permit, uh, we, we could certainly do so. Commissioners, any discussion in that regard?
Who do approve?
The board.
And who do we have there? The motion was made by
Watson.
Watson, with support from
Love.
Love, okay. Commissioners, any discussion? This is relative to the zoning exception permit. And then, in just a second, as soon as we're done with this, we will take a look at the site plan, uh, for any details there. Mr. Cleeman, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Cotton?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Jacobitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Is Nancy Weatherby here?
Yes, she is.
Here I am. Support, support.
Johnson?
Support.
And Watson?
Support.
Okay. Um, then with regards to the site plan, commissioners, we have this, uh, we've, you have the site plan there and we've had some discussion relative to it already. The I guess I would ask, uh, Brenda, do you have anything that you'd like to add about the site plan that would be relevant for us to know?
Uh, staff, staff thinks it's good, in good shape at this point. Uh, we, the only thing to note is that they have not yet provided a landscape plan. They have the option under the ordinance to bring that back later, and so that would have to be a condition of your approval with the uh, landscape plan returned, uh, to you for approval at a later date.
Yeah, basically, we didn't want to invest in paying someone to design the landscaping until we knew that this was actually gonna go through, so.
Um, so if we are to approve it, probably would be conditional upon
Right.
And I, I would also add that a, uh, a lighting plan as well, uh.
Oh, yes, I can do a photometric for that. Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
Again, there's no residential property adjacent there, so it's not like we're too concerned with, with overflow, but just, uh, you know, some concern that we don't want this to look like a, a blazing torch in the, now, town down there, so. Um, commissioners, any discussion on the site plan?
Move to approve.
We have a motion and support, uh, who did the motion come from? I'm sorry.
Watson.
Watson and Taylor for support.
Yeah.
And the motion for is, is to approve the site plan as presented, um, with the, uh, issue that, that the, uh, provide a landscaping plan for the development department's review, along with a lighting plan, photometric plan. Is there anybody on the Zoom call that would like to address the planning commission and the site plan review? I'm looking at our participants and it looks to me like we're getting down to the who's participating, but hearing none, uh, we have a motion on the floor and support, and if there's no additional discussion, we would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Johnson?
Port.
Watson? Cotton?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Taylor?
Port.
Kovitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
And Weatherby?
Support.
Okay. Look forward to this project.
Thank you.
It's been a, uh, an eyesore for a long time. This sounds very promising.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next, uh, case on the agenda is case 20020-329 Logan Street. A zoning exception application and site plan review for marijuana growing facility. This was tabled at our June meeting, as I recall, so once again, if we could have a motion to, just to, kind of formally, but a motion to take this off the table.
Turn move.
Mr. Taylor?
Support.
And support from Ms. Cotton. All those in favor of removing this from the table for discussion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. First, we need to consider the zoning exception portion. And, you know, usually, and I'm sorry, I usually go through a little, a little song and dance about how we, how we do that in the process, but, uh, I kind of skipped that over tonight. Probably the intimidation of these running Zoom meeting does that to me. But the things we have to consider relative to, uh, particularly a marijuana property, a, um, in terms of zoning exception. Um, okay, well, we'll come back to this and is the petitioner with us this evening?
Um, I'm, I'm the architect on the project. I had nothing to do with the site plan and I just noticed that they were on the agenda, so I'm hanging out. If I can answer questions, I will try to do so.
Okay. Um, you know, the questions we have relate more to their marijuana operation than to the architectural part of it.
Yeah, I, uh, I didn't know they were on the agenda, so.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, hi.
And, and who's here? Could you identify yourself?
This is Don Lofton.
Oh, Don. Oh, there, there you are, okay. There was just a blank box there a minute ago. Okay.
Sorry, sir.
Um, Don, um, again, we, we've been here before, so we don't need to hear the whole thing, but if you very briefly tell us what it is you're proposing to do.
Uh, yes, we are proposing to do a marijuana grow facility at 329 Logan.
Yeah. Okay, for cultivation, um. Do you have, uh, the appropriate licenses for, for operating such a facility?
Yes. I have the pre-qualification.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. All the, all the, all of the operations will occur within an enclosed building, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. We can assure that no equipment or process shall be used in the cultivation or processing, which creates noise, dust, vibration, wear, fumes, odors, or electrical interference detectable beyond property boundaries?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, commissioners, are there any questions that you have for Mr. Lofton?
I don't have, I don't have a question for Mr. Lofton. I do have for Mr. Elliott. I think these requirements and specifically full plan on every one of these that we've done and we have one very large growth facility now out on on West Beecher that continuously we have odor problems with. What is there we can do? I know we're working on an odor, that's my understanding. Can you expound on, expound on that at all? Because if we keep, if we keep putting this requirement into the approvals and we're not doing anything to actually enforce it, where do we go?
Yeah, so what we've been doing at this point is having the applicants describe their protocol for odor control, those that you've approved most recently, and then provide a, you know, a, a written version of that protocol for the, for the record. And you can at least hold them to what they've represented to you. Uh, will be their, uh, be their protocol for doing that. Obviously, uh, the operation out on Beecher preceded that, but I would say also that, uh, it's about as sophisticated, having toured it on a few occasions, including during, during harvest time, it's about as sophisticated as you can get in terms of odor control. So, if, if odors are, and, you know, I, I'm not the best person to judge odors. I, I don't have much sense of smell, but you know, if, if there are odors emanating from that facility, you can pretty much count on odors always emanating from such a facility. And this is an industrial use of land. Uh, it will have some odor to it. Other industrial uses, uh, in this area and other areas of the city also have odors somewhat less objectionable than others. Uh, you know, I don't think it will ever be achievable that there won't be days on which odors can escape, but you want to ensure that there's a protocol that you're comfortable with, that they've committed to as part of your approval of the zoning exception permit, uh, before you approve that. And then that is one of the findings that you have to make, or one of the specific conditions that go to one of the findings that you have to make as, as a chair. Uh, Red earlier, uh, that there will be, uh, no, uh, such nuisance factors associated with the use.
Along those lines, and Gordon, thank you for the question. Does it, it brings the point to, to ask, uh, Mr. Lofton, is, is what what arrangements do you make to make sure that any odors are contained within the building?
So, we plan to use a carbon filtration system to mitigate the odor.
Can you elaborate a little bit? I mean, is that like, uh, a big fan at the top of the building that has a, a carbon filter on it, or?
No, it's just like a ventilation system with carbon filters at the end, and then they'll be stuck in the air and, and then we're recycling the air. However, we did meet with the city attorney to discuss it and it indicated that you guys had some new ordinance being drafted or something. So, it'll be changed, so we'll make sure that, you know, I guess we kind of want to wait until you guys get yours drafted so we can meet the new code. Guys, they're, uh, guys are getting one drafted or something by engineer.
The ordinance that, uh, city attorney is working on is a pollution ordinance, and it will apply to all sorts of facilities, uh, that would, that would generate pollutants. But, a, a, and it's intended to apply, you know, after the fact, to, to operations that, that might generate nuisanceful, uh, pollutants of various sorts. But your, your process that you've been engaging in with the grow facilities you've considered most recently is to have a record made of what they intend to do. Uh, they could meet a hot, they could, they could go with a higher standard than that. They should both describe it in a way that you're comfortable with and then follow up with a, uh, a writing that documents that protocol so that that is in the file. And that's at least the minimum standard then, uh, that, that facility will be held to as a condition of zoning exception.
Okay, well, and what I hear Mr. Lofton say is that this facility will have a charcoal filter air system.
Yes.
Any air that is, for any processed air that is being pumped back out into the community.
That is correct.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions regarding the zoning exception permit for, uh, 329 Logan Street? Jeremy, did we receive any written or phone comments from the public on this?
No, sir.
Anyone in this meeting that wishes to address the planning commission on the consideration of a zoning exception permit for this property? For this. Hearing none, we would close the public hearing portion of this and inquire if there's any commissioner discussion. We will get to the site plan in just a second, but just relative to the zoning exception permit. I would suggest that we have reviewed the criteria and if we so chose to grant this, that, uh, the criteria have been met. And unless there's any additional discussion, we would And unless there's any additional discussion, we would entertain a motion to that effect.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Cotton? Is there support?
Or?
Support.
Commissioner Weatherby is who I heard. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, if we can have a roll call vote for adoption of the resolution to approve the zoning exception permit for 329 Logan Street.
Watson? Mr. Lofton? Cotton?
Yes.
Gauss?
Yes.
Taylor? Ford? Ovitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Ford.
And Johnson?
Ford.
Okay. Mr. Lofton, you have your zoning exception permit. And now we'll discuss that for this.
Okay, thank you.
You know, we have, we have looked at this in the past, so I, pardon me. As we, we've seen it before. Is there additional information from the last time that we looked at this that either the architect or the applicant wished to provide?
No, sir.
Okay. I note that staff has made a suggestion that we consider the extension of the sidewalk from the east end of the property to the west curb, to the tracks.
So that's a go ahead, I'm sorry, sir.
Go ahead.
Oh, you finished, I'm sorry.
And also that we need to see, we need to have the required fencing noted on the site plan, illustrated on the site plan, too.
Can you repeat that, the required fencing?
Fencing, yes.
Okay.
We don't, we don't see the fence. Any fencing on the site plan?
Okay, I got you, sir. Yeah, so on that sidewalk, I remember Jeremiah did kind of mention that. And I seen somewhere in the note that it mentioned about for the employees getting to the other side of, of the parking lot. I don't know. So there's an entry to the building facility on the upper parking lot. I don't think anyone would be walking across the front of there. There's, that does that into railroad crossing. So right at the fence line when you enter the, the property, it just ends at that. I did discuss with Jeremiah a possibility you guys may allow us to put a crosswalk where that one ends at currently. Go to the other side of the street.
Would staff care to comment on the, on the sidewalk request there?
Well, the, so the sidewalk ends at the transportation garage there. It's a new sidewalk. You know, this brings up Gordon's comment of if it should be a should, or if they have to. And this is one of the ones that's up to you. We think that some sort of continuation of that sidewalk would be appropriate, though. It does just stop right at his property line from the transportation garage.
Well, and as I've commented before, if we wish to have public sidewalks in the city, it's during the site plan process that we, you know, can leverage that. We can't, don't have any leverage to do so after the fact.
I mean, we wouldn't say go to the tracks. We would say go to that driveway there. So it wouldn't actually go to the tracks. He could stop it at the driveway.
Okay.
Can I, what would the purpose of me stopping at my, at the driveway for? What would that be? They still have to cross the street or they're going to go into the tracks. And then beyond that, there's no continuation of sidewalk in front of the residence next to the house, continued to Division Street. So it would still just be ending there. And I don't really see the, you know, the benefit of it, other than a crosswalk, I understand. If we did a crosswalk, it continues all the way to Division Street. I mean, that makes a little more sense.
Yeah, the sidewalk that you're proposing wouldn't go to anywhere. It goes to a vacant house. I mean, well, I mean, there's the, the tracks interrupt it. And there's no sidewalk on the Logan Street side of that vacant house that sits in that middle corner. So there is a sidewalk to nowhere.
I would say one The sidewalk doesn't need to go to the west. The sidewalk already goes to the east. So you're making a connection to your building entry for the people that could be walking from the east. We don't want any mid-block crosswalks here. The DPW is not going to want that.
And how mu, how much sidewalk are we talking about here? Well, I mean, just, just approximately.
Probably 50 feet or something in that range.
Commissioners, any, any additional discussion from the commission? Okay, like I said, there were no phoned in or written comments on this, and it did not, did not seem to mean that there was anybody else in the audience that wishes to address the planning on this particular matter. Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve the site plan as presented with the condition that the sidewalk as discussed be installed and the site plan reflect the necessary fencing on the property.
So move.
Commissioner Love, motion? Is there support?
Or?
And that, Mr. Cotton? No?
I think it was Weatherby.
Taylor was one of them.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional discussion? If there is none, then if we could have a roll call vote on the approval of the site plan for 329 Logan Street.
Ovitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Ford.
Johnson? Ford. Watson?
Ford.
Cotton?
Yes.
Gauss?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Ford.
Okay. Mr. Lofton, you have your site plan approved with conditions and your zoning exception permit. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is case number 20025. A rezoning application for 307 East Beecher Street from B2 to P1, a parking lot. Usually, I take just a minute to review what it is we have to consider when we do a, when we consider a rezoning, a change in rezoning. And remind people that any action we take is in the form of a recommendation to the city commission because they're the only ones with authority to actually change the ordinance. We need to consider what identifiable, identifiable conditions that relate to this application of change and would therefore justify the proposed change in zoning. If there are any precedents that would be created by either approving or denying this petition, possible effects of those precedents. Is there a change in the impact on the ability of the city or other governmental units to provide adequate public services? Would the requested change negatively affect environmental conditions of the value of surrounding properties? And what is the ability of the property in question we put to a reasonable economic use as it is presented? We'll hear first from the petitioner. Is there someone in the audience to speak to the particular request?
I'd still hear, sir, Don Lofton.
Oh, Don, is this your property as well?
That is correct, sir.
I'm sorry. Tell us what it is you, why is you, why it is you're making this request.
Yes, sir. We're, we're making this request to split part of the property to parking so that we can get a provision at this location.
Now, do I understand correctly that this would not be permitted because this property abuts residential property to the north?
That is correct, sir.
So this would not normally be permitted as a provision center?
That is correct, sir.
So you're proposing that we have a lot split? And that the split off lot be rezoned for parking and exclusively parking?
That is correct.
Okay. Commissioners? I've expressed to staff that I, I personally find this kind of an end around to, to subvert the intent of the ordinance. But on the other hand, they have argued that, you know, that is a good use of the parking zone. Maybe in fact, Greg, do you want to address that?
Yeah, so, I, I mean, you can imagine that if there was strip of, of land. You know, they, they could, for example, I'm not trying to give them the side idea, but they conveyed a five-foot strip of land to their neighbor to the north. That strip of land would still be zoned B2 as the property is zoned. But their property then would no longer have bought a residential zone. And they, and that, that to me would be subverting the intent of the ordinance. Parking district, parking districts in general, and our parking district included, are intended for this kind of a situation. You have a non-residential district that is going to butt up against residential district. And parking districts are meant to provide a low-impact, low-intensity use to allow for a transition between those two kinds of uses. And had, they have special provisions built into them to provide for screening and landscaping that are intended to complement that purpose. So I have no issue with, with this use of a parking district. I understand the city hasn't used it in all that many places, but the couple of places where they have been used are exactly the same kind of circumstance, a transition from residential to a non-residential use. And so I think it's appropriate for that. And you can see, other than that canopy that will have to come down, if the building never moved, then nothing would really change as a result of the rezoning of this land to parking district, except to ensure that nothing is going, no buildings are going to be built there in proximity to the residential use that that would have bought it. So I don't have a, I don't have an issue with this, this use of it. I think it's an appropriate use of the, of the parking district. You might note that there are other residential appearing structures, but the only residential that they, that they abut is the property to the north.
And do I understand correctly, too, then that this would be subject to a site plan review for purpose screening and?
Both site plan review and zoning exception permit review. After the, this, this is the, kind of their first step in the process in order to make an application for a zoning exception permit viable, because otherwise they would not be able to create the conditions.
And did I also understand that the assessor's office, who are the ones, who is the one who actually does property splits, would specify that there be a deed restriction that these two properties could then only be transferred as one unit?
Correct. So parking the, the parking district piece couldn't really stand on its own. It's meant to be accessory to an adjoining non-residential use. And so that would be a, that would be a requirement of a land division, correct?
Okay.
So Greg, can you explain, so would they be required to have screening along all three sides? And remove that building? I mean, personally, I think this is scurrying the issue. And aren't they required to have two exits from their parking lot for the main building? I, I, I feel like we're not getting all the information here.
Well, again, this is just the zoning piece, and, and you would look at a site plan later where we would review the curb cuts and the circulation. I don't have the zoning ordinance in front of me here, actually, but maybe Jeremy can share the screening requirements that are associated with the, with the parking district. Give him a moment to find that.
Could you tell me where the other place where you said these exist?
There's one further east from here. So don't have the zoning map in front of me, but again, maybe Jeremy can point us to that one as well.
Well, regardless of what may be in the ordinance, as long as we have the opportunity for a site plan review on both the, the, on both pieces of property.
But Mike, I want to know what, what are I don't want to rezon this to a parking lot, and all they do is tear it down. I mean, and this isn't against you, Don, or anything, but this could, to me, this is a slippery slope that's going to open up the opportunity for a lot of other things to happen. And I feel like I need some more information before I can say, okay, let's, let's, let's suggest we split this off. You know, if all they have to do is remove the drive-through from the old bank, and that's all they have to do, and they're not required to put screening on, you know, they, would that be the south side, you know, the south side of that red line and on the backside, and you know, to make it a parking lot? Then this just opens up the door for a lot of other things. You know, a lot of, a lot of 10-foot wide parking lots that abut some of these businesses that could be marijuana dispensaries. It could open up a whole other Pandora's Box.
There is a minimum size parcel, I believe, for, again, Jeremy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's a minimum size parcel for parking district as well. You can see this is not a insubstantial portion of their lot there that they're proposing to rezon.
Boy, I, I'm not, Greg, I'm looking at the, that portion of the ordinance, and I'm not seeing minimum lot sizes or anything like that.
It's a
I may be looking in the wrong spot, too, so.
Yeah, I could be wrong about that, but it's, it's a practical matter. You can, a parking lot has got to be at least, you know, so if you have a two-way drive that's 24 feet plus parking spaces are 20 feet deep, it's, it's not, it's not going to be a five-foot right. It has to be wide enough to actually function as, as a parking lot, plus the screening requirement that's contained in the parking district. How are we doing on finding the screening requirement, Jeremy?
That's just a minute.
You're on mute.
All right, I have to like remote in. It's 927 Treat Street. If you guys want to look at that parking one, will I find this? I don't know if Michelle wants to pull that up on Google Maps.
It says, relative of distances and setbacks, side and rear yards where a P1 district is contiguous to the side in a rear lot lines of premises within a residentially zoned district, screening shall be provided, screening shall be provided.
What do I need to go to?
It's actually pretty, pretty nebulous. But it does say screaming, screening shall be provided. I, I don't see where there's a minimum lot size. Greg is right. I mean, in terms of practicality, but
If there's no minimum, then it's subjective to the, well, I'm going to make it a, a three-car parking lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, but again, you have, you have certain minimum things that you need. Like I say, you need an aisle width, which is going to be a two-way aisle in most cases. So that's 24 feet. Plus, you need the depth of the parking lot, parking spaces, which is I understand that correctly. Is that written down somewhere in our ordinance? Because as we all know, our ordinance can be a little thin some places.
I don't, I don't see any of that.
Well, if you rewrite it, I don't want to, I don't want to open Pandora's Box. We've done that before. We've done that before.
Yeah, no, but if you, if you got a request to rezone a parcel to parking district that wasn't of legitimate size to create a parking lot, then that would be a reason to not, to deny that request.
Yeah.
For rezoning the parking district. That, that would not be a reason, you know, when you, when you evaluate a rezoning, you look to see whether the parcel is a reasonable module of land for that zoning. And if it's too, you know, if it's a strip, then no, that's not a reasonable module of land for that zoning. It has to be big enough to actually create a legitimate parking lot with the dimensional requirements that the parking district has.
And, and Brian, I mean.
What you just said, like, what is the dimension? I mean, if we start buying houses and knocking them down just to put a parking lot in, you know, that, that, that's my other question, you know?
Well, that does happen in some places. I mean, places that have parking districts that they use extensively. You know, it's often where commercial lots haven't, aren't large enough for today's requirements. And then the next slot over that was residential ends up getting rezoned to parking district as a way to avoid the commercial district or the, or the non-residential district continuously encroaching to draw a line there, which is, you know, that next lot, but only for parking.
Well, what are we looking at here? Is this 927 Treat supposed to look like a parking lot?
Yeah, well, that was an example of another piece of property that is zoned for, as a parking lot. I'm not sure why.
Really?
It looks like it's a yard there.
Yeah.
A big yard that's going to someday be a parking lot.
Yeah.
I did find the screening requirements.
Where's? Enlighten us.
Let's finish figuring out what the parking is before we go on to.
Is that in section 4.6, Jeremy, that you found that?
Um, yes, I'm trying to zip through this. It's EI, and I know you guys, this is a little different than us right now with the formatting. But there's parking areas in commercial office, public and non-public schools. And then it has off-street parking, and then it particularly has P1 vehicular parking district, requires four-foot, six-inch minimum barriers that are located at the lot lines. It kind of goes into a lot on here with parking areas and residential zones with establishing parking areas and what needs to be by them. It's kind of a lot to unpack.
Well, the condition, if, if you look just within the parking district, there are certain, there are obviously, the only thing you can use it for is parking. So that's one thing that lowers the intensity. But then there's a setback requirement that models the setback for any residential structures that would be on that side of the street. So again, it can't encroach closer to the street than the residential structures, so that that front yard is maintained as though it were residential. Limitations on size, limitations on the kind of vehicles that can be parked, they're basically only passenger vehicles, not trucks or anything like that. Like, you know, the, these districts are meant to, to function in this kind of a situation where residential's on the other side of them and they form a transition to commercial, allowing the commercial use to have their parking there, but only their parking there. So if you consider, I mean, we're talking about whether or not this can be potentially a dispensary, that's the applicant's purpose. But all, but the property that we're talking about is already zoned B2 and, you know, has been a used car lot for years and years. So we're really talking about taking this piece of this lot and making it less intense than what it was before.
You know, in, in this particular case, this seems to, the proposal seems to make some sense in this particular case. I just, my concern is that we are creating a precedent. But as Greg pointed out, we also have the opportunity to not do rezonings on, you know, future requests, just.
In every case where you're doing a rezoning, you have your findings that Jeremy's laid out in the staff review. And it's, it's very much site-specific. I mean, currently, the master plan doesn't make distinctions about where parking districts would be appropriate. But as we get into our new one, I would anticipate, we have a parking district, that we would have some set of criteria for those circumstances where it's appropriate to utilize the parking district.
Commissioners? I'm not hearing a whole lot of discussion from other commissioners here.
I can't really see much of an issue with it because obviously with just the logical requirements of space that would be needed, you could easily turn down somebody who's trying to do something that just doesn't make sense. And this obviously does, I mean, there's already cars parked there. It's really not going to change the nature of the neighborhood at all. So to me, it doesn't really seem like that big of a deal or setting a precedent that we can't make a discretionary decision on.
Okay. Anybody else?
Uh, question, can we require that the, the drive-through lanes be removed?
When we do a site plan, we certainly could. No, I think we, Don, I think we almost have to, because otherwise we, we have created a setbacks between these two properties. I think we would almost have to require that that, that the, that that canopy be removed.
We would do that during site plan review, you're saying?
Oh, no, I'm saying before, I was saying before we approve a rezoning, stipulation for approving, recommending a rezoning.
So put it as a contingency on the rezoning then?
Along with the fact you're.
Going to condition the rezoning, the applicant has to offer you that condition.
Yes.
If you're uncomfortable rezoning it absent that, then you shouldn't rezone it. But the, the applicant can tell you that he's offering that as a condition of rezoning, in which case you can accept that and, and apply that as a condition.
You hear that, Don?
Yes.
Essentially, you're saying we cannot require it then?
Can't require it, you can accept his offer of that as a basis for your approval.
Well, then, I think we should ask the applicant if he's willing to offer us that.
So the applicant is not denying that request. However, due to the current situation with COVID and the curbside services and some of the other things going on, I think that would be advantageous for us to maybe keep that on there. But if that's the only opportunity to get this done, we will gladly remove it.
But you also wouldn't be able to have a drive-through lane there. Parking district is only for parking, it's not for drive-throughs. And so you would not be able to utilize it in that way.
We also prohibit drive-up, drive-through marijuana sales.
Right, that is also currently true. I mean, that could be revised, but as it relates to the parking district, it's only for parking passenger vehicles. You can't have a drive-through lane there.
See, this is, the whole thing comes, if we're, if he, if we're going to split this, it needs to be split. It can't be a shared parking lot.
Yeah.
In my opinion, it needs to be split. There needs to be a whole hedge row of arborvitus or some sort of fence that makes it a parking lot. But from what I understand, Greg, you're telling me at this point, we can't say that. So it's either up or down, it's a parking lot with the drive-through sticking in it, or it isn't.
Well, yeah, I mean, at the point where you would rezone it with the canopy sticking into it, the canopy becomes non-conforming at that point. Where, where, when he comes to you for site plan review, he's going to need to resolve that issue. But you absolutely don't, you don't want to create that situation. And I can understand why you might not want to, because, because one of the things you could, should consider when evaluating a rezoning request is whether or not you're, you're creating a conforming parcel. Then I would suggest that you table it, let the applicant decide whether or not he wants to proffer
Not remove.
A condition that would be actually the rezoning, that he will remove that canopy, in which case you could go ahead and approve it conditionally. But it, it's far better to have that clear and clearly coming from the applicant. You can't, you can't require it and he can't couch his offer in terms of, well, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm acceding to your request. That, that's not okay. He has to offer, freely offer the condition that the canopy will be removed, in which case you could rely on that.
I, I appreciate that. And I think that this, this is a, this is kind of a complicated issue that we're getting the gist of for the first time. And I think perhaps tabling it for the time being would be the right thing to do.
I move to table it till our next meeting.
Or? We have motion from Watson and support from Gloss, it sounded like to me to table this. Can we do a voice on that?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of tabling this? Please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this item is tabled. We will, with, with the tentative attempt or tentative plan on reviewing this at the August meeting, so. Next item on our agenda is case 20031, 2700 West Beecher Street. It's on an exception application and site plan review for Consumers Energy Substation. Is there someone here from Consumers?
Yes, good evening, Joe Lawson here on behalf of Consumers Energy.
Oh, Joe, I didn't notice you just now. Would you just give us, we, we have the diagrams in front of us, or not, or at least on our screens. Could you give us some notes of what it is you're proposing to do here?
Yes, sir. The, the location that we have before the commission this evening is approximately four and a half acre site on West Beecher. Consumers Energy is requesting the site plan approval and the zoning exception approval for the construction of a new electrical substation at this location. Basically based on future development plans of the city and, and current loads, the the station has been deemed necessary for this particular area, so we can service those customers in, in the city of Adrian. It's pretty straightforward, pretty basic. There's one drive approach off of the north side of Beecher. The substation will be fenced with a seven-foot tall chain link fence. For the request of staff, we've added additional landscaping along the west and the southwest corner in addition to landscaping along the east property line. Interior of the site will, will be gravel like every other typical substation. It's pretty basic and straightforward. I don't know if there's any questions I can answer for you. That's it in a nutshell.
Questions for Mr. Lawson? This is both a zone, again, a zoning exception permit and a site plan review. I'm quickly looking here for the requirements for these, the stipulations for the zoning exception permit.
This should be right above the staff review of site plan.
Okay.
Put down one, Michelle. Be there.
Okay, thank you. It is a permitted use. We don't see any adverse environmental effects or negative effects on surrounding properties. This is in a industrial district. It is compatible with the adjacent and surrounding properties. And this is a permitted use, both in the zone it is and with the future land use plan.
Do you want me to explain any of it, Mike?
I think it's pretty straightforward, Jeremy. I think, I think we could do, if we so chose, that the proposal meets the requirements for this use in that district. Again, did we receive any written or phone comments from anybody in the public?
No, sir.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this proposal? Commissioners, any discussion on the site, on the site plan, but on the zoning exception permit for this subsite, substation? Are none, we would entertain a motion for approval of the zoning exception application for 2700 West Beecher Street?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we've got Cotton and Taylor look like. Any additional discussion? Okay, roll call vote if we may.
Couch?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Kovitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Port.
Johnson?
Support.
Watson?
Port.
And Tom?
Yes.
Okay, then, relative to the site plan, we kind of discussed, we kind of discussed that. We've just, I think the staff has addressed screening issues, and I know that is there going to be any lighting, exterior lighting on this project?
There's generally one whole light that will be located on the site. I'm trying to see where it's at on this particular one. Basically over top of, of some of the equipment.
Okay. And I believe staff has reviewed screening on it, and I understand that from a practical standpoint, extensive screening is undesirable for security reasons, but that we have some landscaping shown here that, that serves, serves to a certain extent that purpose. Commissioners, any questions or comments on the site plan review? Okay, I'm presuming also then that there's, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on the site plan review for this substation? I would suggest that if we so chose, that we could approve the site plan and entertain a motion to that effect.
Motion to approve.
Or?
And that was Krista, and who was the support?
Taylor.
Taylor, thank you, sir. Okay, any additional discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Watson? Cotton?
Yes.
Douse?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Kovitz?
Yes.
Mike?
Love? Yes.
Weatherby?
The part.
And Johnson?
Or.
Okay, Mr. Lawson, you're set to go, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Have a good evening.
Folks, case number 20023, if I understand correctly, has been withdrawn?
Yes. And the, I do want to point out that there was a rezoning on here. It was a, like, you may remember the address, I can't remember it off the top of my head. But that one has been withdrawn as well.
Okay, yeah, it was 406 North Broad Street.
Yep.
Okay. Is there any other business to come before the planning commission this evening?
I think we are going to discuss the setting of the public hearings for, in regards to our RRC business friendly. I don't know if Greg wants to jump in on this one or not, but.
Well, we don't have any to say. Well, we don't have any set tonight, is that correct, Jeremy?
Uh, not for uh next time. Um, potential, that, well, there is a couple potentially, but it's hard to tell if they're gonna be ready till next week or so.
Yeah, I'll see, and therein lies the problem. So it's been the practice of the planning commission to set public hearings. That's not required by the enabling act or by the zoning ordinance. Uh, but that's been your past practice. And and the problem with that is that uh, since you only meet once a month, uh, we end up having to put people off for, for two months uh in order to uh begin the process of their uh, of their development plan, whatever it might be, if it requires a public hearing, and everything requires a public hearing other than site plan reviews, everything else, zoning exception permits, rezonings, require public hearing. I would just throw it out there for discussion. Um, you know, in general, not a very business-friendly sort of approach to inject that sort of delay into the process. I think there are other ways that we could uh, um, you know, make you aware of what we have uh in the offing without having to put it on the agenda in order to get approval to um, to set the public here. Most, most communities, I would say, public hearings are set uh by staff in reaction to receipt of an application.
Commissioners, are we comfortable with making that, like, as Greg said, it's neither, it's neither the law nor, it's, it's not state law nor in our ordinance that we formally set public hearings by, by motion and action at the planning commission. I'm fine with that. I, I guess I would request that if we do that, that we get a copy of the agenda, of a, a draft copy of the agenda is, you know, maybe mid-month or something like that.
Um, so if I could, um, I think uh Greg alluded to the fact that with our RRC money we're getting for the, the um comprehensive plan too, it's part of our best practice to do it this way to be more business-friendly. And what I can do is start giving you, um, so, starting maybe tomorrow, I'll start giving you weekly updates of what we have coming in. Doesn't mean it'll be at the next agenda, but at least you can start knowing what um projects we have coming. Um, some of these get old, some of them, you know, are ready to go in two weeks, but I can start giving you um an idea of what we have going on, if that helps.
Jeremy, I would, I'm not sure even it has to be weekly, but just, uh, you know.
As they come in.
Yeah, every, every once in a while, uh, so that we don't see it for the first time three days before the meeting, I guess, is what I'm kind of getting at.
I can definitely give you guys a heads up, um, as they come in, try to say, hey, this one's there if you guys wanna think about it.
That'll let you investigate, you know, do your site visits, think about it. Um, yeah, I would just caution you on those, you know, on those email communications, don't, don't engage in discussions amongst yourselves about um, what, what's gonna be coming up for the uh, for the uh future meeting agendas. That would violate, violate the Open Meetings Act, but uh it's not a problem for us to put that information out there for you so you can have a heads up as to what's coming and start thinking about it. Uh, you know, visiting the properties, et cetera.
Commissioner, are we com- everyone reasonably comfortable with that?
I think so.
Okay, so you have nine, okay, um.
Um, I just, I wanna say that this common sense approach to making the process, as you said, more friendly to our citizens, our businesses, just make, it's, it's great. I, I mean, we hear all of the time at the commission level how unfriendly City Hall is to businesses and to just everyday citizens who wanna, you know, who, who wanna do something on their property. And this is the kind of thinking that we need to have by city staff to, to make these changes and help us become a more forward-thinking city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Um, Greg, would you wanna take just a minute or two uh and make any, give me, maybe give us an update on the comprehensive plan progress?
Can I just say one more thing on the?
Oh, yes, yes.
I mean, I would really like to just have a common practice of, you know, within a week, we don't, you know, if somebody comes to you on Friday and says, I have this, I really don't wanna see it on our agenda for the next Tuesday. Just so I can do my due diligence and that kind of thing. Um, and also too, like, I looked at our agenda, I looked at our plan, and I would have kind of liked a little bit more of a heads up for the, the uh parking lot thing that, you know, just maybe, hey, here's something we don't normally see. I didn't even know we had a parking lot zone. Um, you know, if little things like that come up, just say, hey, guys, you might wanna all just take a little quick look at this or, um, you know, something like that, just to give us a little heads up so we could have maybe done more for Mr. Lawson tonight than we did. Um, that's just my.
Brian, generally, it's not an issue because, because anything that comes into the, over the, you know, over the windowsill at the last minute isn't gonna be on the agenda because all these things require public notice. And either it has to be in the paper or postcards have to be mailed out. So anything that's actually on the, action items that are actually on the agenda.
I thought that's what we just said, doesn't need to happen anymore. I'm.
No, 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 we still need to give, we still need to get public notice.
We, we need to get public notice for most things. Not, site plans do not require public notice, but uh zoning exception permit rezonings require public notice. And so that injects, you know, the public notice period is 15 days. So, you know, nothing's gonna get on sooner than about 21 days after uh we receive an application of a public notice that's required. Site plans could conceivably go faster, but we, we, I mean, we have to do staff abuse and so on. Things don't end up getting on the agenda unless we've, in most cases, unless we've had them at least three weeks.
Brian, okay?
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Elliott, if you could give us a very quick update on any progress on the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, so I asked Giffles for an update uh this week, and uh Joe Tangeri, who's the senior planner working with Rod Royal on it, uh, replied, we're finishing off the draft of the first several sections and plotting out public input. At the moment, we will forward the initial draft chapters to you soon. Our approach to public input will try to build on the previous or current opportunities. Howard's survey, by which he means the Economic Development Survey, and the SEPTED study, uh, which is the safe neighborhood study that the MSU Extension is doing. We'd like to have a call with you sometime between now and the August meeting to work it all out. Need to establish the redevelopment-ready sites uh to focus on, so the, the redevelopment-ready grant requires us to identify particular sites to strategize about in the uh comprehensive plan as well that, that require redevelopment. That's what he's referring to there. Thought us on vacation, we will determine the next best time for a call. So uh, the, don't be alarmed by the fact that they've written some of the chapters. Those will be chapters uh on existing conditions and demographics and uh the existing land uses that they've surveyed. They've developed mapping of existing land uses, so they are policy chapters. Um, there are those sorts of uh, of uh reporting, uh, you know, objective information. Uh, chapters that are usually at the beginning of the plan that they would be working on drafts of right now.
Okay, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Any other business? If there is none, then we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Our next meeting is Tuesday, August 4th.
Aye.
Good night.
We, we keep doing these meetings on election day. It's sometimes problematic.